Still hate doing that. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. This is Tuesday, June 21st. Feels like a Monday. And it's also the first day of spring. We just figured out. So, pretty cool. Dave, would you lead us in the pledge brief?
My pleasure. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Let's move on to item number three. Roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I am here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Chutey. Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I am here. We'll excuse the good commissioner this time. Let's move on to item number four. Correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: A liquor license application for IL Canali LLC, Notification of pending marijuana extraction operation, Special occasion liquor license application for Christmastown Kiowanis, And liquor and cannabis license renewal applications due to expire. Advisory board applications were received from Tamara Ingwaldson For the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board, And Greg Oldham For the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Great. Thank you. Nice smile. Let's move on to item number 4.2. A recognition of Judge Amber Finley retiring after 23 years. Commissioner, would you like to begin?
Sure. I've actually known Amber for many, many years. As a matter of fact, I actually worked on a campaign when she was running all those years ago. Put together a commercial for her and stuff, and she has never let me down since. She's been honorable in every way, fashion I can imagine. I never would have known when I helped her that I would eventually work with her from the commission, From the commission level with her position. And she has never let us down there either. Her professionalism is beyond question. Her integrity again. But more than that, as a person, what a wonderful, wonderful human being she is. And of all the compliments you can say about a person, that's probably one of the finest. Because we have hard times in this world sometimes. So when you find somebody that is that wonderful and that incredible and can take on that much Weight on their shoulders, you just have to look at them and say, "Thank you." So I wish her God's blessings on her next adventure and whatever she decides to do in her life. She definitely has been a pleasure to work with.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more. She's a pretty amazing woman. 23 years as a judge. Wearing the robe. That's gotta be fun. Now, she is pretty amazing. She and I go to the same gym. And it's fun to see her in a different setting, I guess. Not upon the stage or on the rostrum, but it's pretty cool. She's an amazing woman. Appreciate all the years of service that she's given Mason County. And look forward to her new adventures and her sharing those with us. So, Judge Finley, we're gonna miss ya.
I'm sure. I have a feeling that the sheriff may want to make a comment. I hate to throw him under the bus on that. They're talking about Amber Finley's retirement. Would you like to?
Is she on there right now?
Don't know. No.
Don't think so.
I sure would. I got another one I can make later, but I'm not sure.
Have you known her?
Comment on that.
Yes, please. I'm not the chair. Sorry.
Which way are we facing, anyway?
You're good.
This is the first time I've been back for two years. If we have even, I don't know how. So, yes. I remember Judge Finley from a long time ago before she was Judge Finley. And working the prosecutor's office on cases. And having her move down to the city and take over the municipal court was a wonderful time working with her. She did a great job of working with us through some very tough times down there with just different things. And then having her move to the superior court seat. And I think it was very fortunate for our county to have Judge Amber Finley there. And I would tell you that, as in each of our judges that have left ahead of Amber and with her leaving, It's a tough loss for our county each time we do that. And we'll miss Judge Finley greatly. I bet that as she steps away, there'll be a big smile on her face and a little bit of relief coming off. I know that one thing that Judge had mentioned before that was a challenge is that when you're Or a judge and you have somebody else in the house, it's also a local attorney, That the conversations have to be very, very limited for court proceedings and things and what you can discuss. And I have no doubt that those conversations, the ones that weren't allowed to take place, Did not take place because she was very adamant about that. And she said that after she retired, she'll actually be able to talk to her husband about other things. So, we're gonna miss her greatly. And I hope that she really gets a chance to enjoy her retirement and the things that she wants to do.
Thank you so much. Appreciate those comments. Would anyone else like to say a few words? How about in the Zoom room? All right.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I would just like to note that, and I hope I pronounce this right, Kadeen L. Ferguson Brown is going to be the replacement that's sworn in On Friday, the 24th, at 4:00. So I think this is Judge Finley's replacement.
Great. Thank you.
Perhaps we can make a rapist for her to come in and meet?
Absolutely.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item number five. This is open forum for citizens' citizen input. This is the time we set aside for folks to come on up and address the commission Regarding things that are not on today's agenda. So if you'd like to ask that you come up to the podium, State your name and where you're from. And you'll have three minutes. So, anybody in the room would like to come up?
Good morning again. My name is Bill Long. I'm at 21 North Steel Lane in Huddsport, Washington. And I'm here representing the Friends of Lake Cushman Dog Park. I brought with me our Vice President Julie Manley and our Board Member, Anita Floyd. And we're just here to answer any questions on the agenda at 8:11, I believe it is.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else? All right. How about anyone in the Zoom room? All right. Not seeing anyone raise their hands or unmute themselves. So, let's move on to item number six.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption. Today's agenda as presented.
And I will second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Move on to item number seven. Approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the June 2nd, 2022 special meeting minutes, The June 6th, 2022 briefing minutes, And the June 7th, 2022 regular meeting minutes as presented.
And I will second. We have a motion and a second to approve the June 2nd, 2022 special meeting minutes, June 6th, 2022 briefing minutes, And the June 7th, 2022 regular meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? All right. I'll call for the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. And aye. Motion passes. Let's move on to item number eight. This is approval of our action agenda. My goodness. It feels like a Monday on a Tuesday.
It gets worse as you get older, Commissioner.
So Commissioners will read through the items on the agenda. And we will ask members of the public and Commissioners if they have any questions. If there are, the item will be moved for a separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you could read items 8.1 through 8.5. And I will read items 8.6 through 8.11.
Gladly. Madam Chair, item number 8.1 reads: Approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance claims clearing fund. Warrants number 8088407 through 8088477. The amount: $1,977,942.72. Direct deposit fund. Warrants number 87636 through 88042. The amount: $804,521.80. Salary clearing fund. Warrants number 7006689 through 7006723. The amount: $1,053,430.86. Item number 8.2. Approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 19, 2022, at 9:15 a.m. To consider the open space applications. Item number 8.3. Approval to sign the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 agreement with Public Utility District, PUD Number 3 Substation. Item number 8.4. Approval of the Mason County Commission 2023 and 2024 preliminary budget preparation guidelines. Item number 8.5. Approval of the proposed settlement agreement between Concrete School District, Quilliot Valley School District, Nacelle Grace River School District, Clallum County Fire District Number 4, Wakaycom County, Pacific Counties, Comedian County, Mason County, City of Forests, American Forest Resource Council, Port of Port Angeles, Clallum County Fire District Number 5, Lewis County and Darrington School District, And the State of Washington Department of Natural Resources, DNR, Regarding DNR-managed forest lands.
Item 8.6. Approval for the Chair to execute all related documents for the Infrastructure Project Grant Appropriations funding for the County Russell Wood Water System upgrades project. Item 8.7. Approval for the Chair to execute all related documents for the Infrastructure Project Grant Appropriations funding for the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility Debt Relief Project. Item 8.8. Approval of the resolution for the sole source procurement Of a John Deere excavator asphalt cutter attachment from, Is it Pape? Pape machinery for?
We're all on that one.
Right.
Yeah.
Item 8.9. Approval for the County Engineer to execute and adopt a road agreement between Mason County and Mason Benson Center. Item 8.10. Approval for the County Engineer to execute and adopt a road agreement between Mason County and Friends of Pleasant Cove. Item 8.11. Approval to sign the letter of support to accompany the Friends of Lake Cushman Dog Park Pet Safe Bart for Your Park 2022 grant application. That's an apple. All right. Having read through the items on the action agenda, Are there any items that you would like to have removed, Commissioner?
Uh, no.
All right. Any items that the public would like to have removed? All right. How about in the Zoom room? Any items that would you? Are there any items you would like to have removed for a separate discussion or vote? All right. Seeing none. We'll move on to adoption.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda in its full entirety as presented.
And I will second. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the action agenda in its entirety as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah. Comment. Again, I'm glad we're able to step up and get that letter of support out there to you. I assume it's gonna approve here in a moment. I also wanted to thank our staff for the different grants and the work that they've done to go out there. I'm sure the people that are in Russell Wood and stuff are gonna be very, very appreciative. I just met with some more of them out there. So, thank you for everything you guys have done there. And a pat on the back to WASAC for, not a fan of lawsuits, But there's been a time where this county had to step in and become parts of certain lawsuits In order to protect the county from state, federal, different things over the years. This has been one of the ones that's turning out to be good for all the citizens of Mason County For being involved with that group. And I wanted to thank Commissioner Trask on that one as well Because she's the representative at WASAC with us. And so she deals with this more on a regular basis. So, that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Thank you. And I agree with everything that you said. It'll be fun to take my dog to the dog park because I'm sure you'll get it. And as far as the DNR lawsuit, It was, it's been going on for about three years. And it was quite interesting to be part of the process And to be able to help support our junior taxing districts. They are the ones that were being hit hardest by DNR. So, it's neat to be able to stand up and support them. So, now I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. All right. Now we're gonna move on to item number nine. This is the time we set aside for our department heads or other elects to come and address the commission. Do we have any department heads or elects that would like to come and address?
You're it.
I'm it?
You're it. Come on up.
It's a tough enough day already.
Actually, I think you're the first ones since we even started coming back to them.
You know, and I know. And when the sheriff walks in the room, it's like, oh, God, what does he have? And I'm telling you, it's just the way it's a business goes. I guess starting off on a good note before I jump into the next piece. First of all, it's nice to see Richard here. I got back about 50 years ago, I met Richard, so that's something else. I always like to start off with something good before we get to the bad stuff. You know, the last few years not being here, I think it's been tremendously trying for all of us. It's so nice to see actually people's faces. I can't see you with a mask on, so it's great to see everybody. And during that time, some people aren't aware of a number of the things that the Board has done to assist us. It's been some pretty challenging times with legislative changes. And we just discussed this before I came over this morning, That, you know, the cameras and the shields and going back and getting the less than lethal things And doing everything that we can to, I guess, almost compensate for somewhat of our legislative people Have put us in bad positions has been extremely helpful. We've had a lot of difficulties this last year. And you guys have stepped up. Cameras, you haven't seen those are really cool things. They're not on right now. They've already saved us a fortune, I believe, in lawsuits by having those on. So thank you for those. The reason I'm here today and that I'm obviously I'm by myself Because usually I'll have a chief or two and the undersheriff with me Is that that's why I'm here today, is there is no one else to be here. Our staffing levels have been super challenging. And as we discussed earlier in some briefings earlier in the year, a couple of months ago, Over a couple of times, that our jail staffing is extremely challenged. And I mentioned to you in that last briefing that if we lost one more person, We would have to be looking to go into outsourcing because we won't have enough people to keep the lights on. The undersheriff called me Friday afternoon to let me know that he thought it would be appropriate For me to address the group today and not wait for a briefing. We have now lost two more people as of Friday, Which puts us below what we have to basically run that jail. And we have a couple more with their feet in other people's pastures moving on in the next few weeks. So I'm letting you know that we are over 28% of our staff has now gone out of the jail. We have got a number more looking at leaving. And Chief Hanson is working on figuring out a way that we're gonna have to go outsourcing And what that's gonna cost. That was, I'm gonna say it wasn't shocking. We've been seeing this coming. But we are once again in a really, really tight position. And just to keep the jail open, we have to have somebody that runs the doors to open them. We have to have somebody at the front desk. And we have to have somebody doing cell checks. And to run that 24 hours a day on the staffing that we have, we're very close. We're there and not having that anymore. And so Chief Hanson is working on that right now, figuring out a way to outsource And what those costs will be. And we're not sure where we're going from there. So, not good news. We're working on it. We'll be probably meeting with you again, but we didn't wanna wait any longer. Friday afternoon was a bad phone call for me. So I'm not sure what we're gonna do to move forward. But people are moving on quickly. So, just letting you know. And we'll have something to present to you, but it's gonna have to be like really fast. We're gonna have to get on top of this because we have to hold people. We have to have, you know, state law says we have to hold people in custody. State law says we have to have train corrections officers, not deputy sheriffs. And if we were to use deputies, that means we've gotta send them to 10 weeks of training. And then they're gonna be gone. And so we are really, really, we're underwater right now. And we're trying to get back to where we can tread water. And we'll be coming to you to discuss solutions, I guess. The chief and lieutenant are working on those right now. So anyway, sorry for that bad news. It's great to see everybody again. No, gosh, it's been a long time to come in the room. Either I got shorter or the cameras got taller. I'm hoping the cameras got taller because they didn't used to be that tall. So, I don't know if there's any questions I can answer without the chief here, probably not many. But it's coming on quick. It's over kind of in a way. So, we'll work on that, see what we can do to keep at least the light on. And we're contacting other institutions right now to see if they'll hold for us. So, all right. Thank you.
I know for one, I would like to be involved in those discussions. You guys have been a priority for me since
Yeah.
I ran. And without you guys, we're in the world of hurt.
And you know, we're not the only, and just for general public, okay, we're not the only ones. I don't know if you watched, I talked to Adam, excuse me, Sheriff Fortney, Snow County. He's pulling all of his detectives to put on the street. They're that low. They're running the same problems we are. It's kind of statewide, depending on where you're at and what you're operating for compensation. People are going where the money's at, and that's where we're losing them to. So, even some of the bigger ones are struggling.
We have a nationwide election, the news is forming last night.
Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for the other things. I haven't had a chance to thank you. And I know that our new sheriff is gonna come over and talk some more about those And what that's done for us. But thank you so much.
Thanks, Sheriff. Okay. And do we have any other department heads that would like to address the commission? Going, going. I don't see any in the Zoom room. So, alrighty. Thank you all. All right. It is time that we can move on to our public hearings. We have a public hearing to consider the sale of real property on Johns Prairie Road in Shelton, Parcel Number 32007-13-00050 for $10,000 To New Hiawatha LLC and ask staff to present.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we've been talking a little bit about this piece of property for a while. We had, I think we bought it back in 1990 for $1,742.24. It was kind of a unique deal. When you look at the history of the road, you could see where County Road went out And actually cut off a corner of this piece of property, Which we then purchased that from the owner at the time. We were approached by Mr. Cayman a few months ago saying, Hey, we're interested in purchasing this back from you because he owns the surrounding parcels. So we started that process. And we recently got back the best and final offer. And Hiawatha Corporation, or New Hiawatha Corporation, Specifically Mark Cayman has actually made an offer of $10,000 on that parcel, which is great. So, I would like to receive approval from the Board today To sell that parcel in the amount of $10,000 to New Hiawatha LLC. And the parcel number is 32007-13-00050.
All right. Thank you. Do we have questions for staff? Any questions in the Zoom room? Not seeing any, Commissioner, any questions? All right. All right. So it's now time for public comment. If you'd like to comment, ask that you raise your hand. I'll call on you. Step up to the podium, state your name and where you're from. And so do we have anyone that would like to comment? Public comment? You guys are making my day easy. Appreciate that. Let's move on to Commissioner deliberation or motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the real property located at East Johns Prairie Road in Shelton, Parcel Number 32007-13-00050. The amount of the sale is $10,000 to New Hiawatha LLC. And I'll just have a comment.
Okay. Great. And I will second that.
Comment?
Comment.
Just so the public is aware, We made sure that there was no favoritism or any type of special treatment for anybody individual. We put it out on the market for a length of time. We waited weeks before we accepted offers. And then when we did, there were competing offers, we put out for highest and best. And I just wanted to make it clear that that's the process the government should always take. So, just so you know, it did go out. It's a complete arms-length transaction and for the most amount of money that anybody was willing to offer for it at the time. So, I wanted them to know, I think we did our job.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let me read the motion one more time. Approval of the sale of real property located at East Johns Prairie Road in Shelton, Washington, Parcel Number 32007-13-00050, In the amount of $10,000 to New Hiawatha LLC. And call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10. Nope. Item number 11. Boards calendars and reports. Commissioner?
Okay. In the last few weeks, we had, I had left board meetings. I had meetings with the school, North Mason School District in regards to their balanced calendar, The idea of whether it'd be open all year long. Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting. I met with, I think it's the Swizer Foundation. They're putting together a huge event out here, in case people don't know. Last I heard, they had 47 bands that are gonna be performing down by the Matlock area. This is to raise money and awareness for traumatic brain injury. And this is a wonderful man. He had a smaller event last year. This one's going to be covered on, I guess, iHeartRadio. And there's another radio station that will be covering it. It's pretty fantastic, starting to work together with Transit in order to have transportation out to those fields. They've done a wonderful job of cleaning it up out there. And hopefully it's gonna be very successful. And I've been meeting with them for quite a while here. They're also looking at trying to find ways to bring in other nonprofits That are helping some of our people, such as the developmentally disabled community, The elderly community, and others, To be able to raise awareness and money at that event while they're doing this. It'll go down for several days. There'll be more information coming on it shortly. I also met with a joint meeting with the ARC and the Hub, the senior center up in North Mason, Looking at different options. Somebody out in the North Mason area bought the Big Red Barn. They wanted to meet to look at different options that they may have. I had a couple of political kickoff that I attended. North Mason Chamber of Commerce trustee meeting. Mason County Housing Authority meeting. North Mason Fire Authority. We met to go look over the building a little bit. And I met with others to look over the building, look at different options. Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization. Mark White, which he's known throughout the community for many, many different things. But his biggest thing that he's known for is his articles in the journal. But more than that is all the videos that he has created for all the different nonprofits, Government agencies, historic entities. He's been a part of getting the information on the Sergeant's Oyster House, The Mason Transit Authority as we went through our processes, The North Mason School District for their bonds. The list actually goes on and on. There is more that I've forgotten that I'll be able to even mention here. He's just done that forever. Well, he was, his celebration of life was this last weekend in Lilywhop. And it was very well done. And he will be missed in the community. Let's see. I also met with some folks out there at the Russell Wood Community Homeowners Association That wanted to get together. So, in the upcoming week here, I have a meeting with somebody for the voter integrity Right after this meeting. I have another meeting tomorrow with the citizens that have questions about that organization And the information that's being sent out. Mason Transit Authority meeting. Lakeland Village is having a meeting where the new sheriff will be speaking. And I'll be attending that there. The celebration of life for Laura Pinter. Frank Pinter was with our county for many, many, many years. His wife is, was an absolutely incredible, incredible lady. And I will be officiating, so I will be there for that. But I want to point out just a quick story. Frank is a consummate professional, always, never loses his temper, always staying calm, Always saying things in the proper manner. And then the first time I was ever introduced to his wife was on the telephone. And then the first time I was ever introduced to his wife was on the telephone, she was in the background, dropping F-bombs like you couldn't imagine, letting it all fly. She is the spice of life, and I'm gonna tell you, that lady was absolutely incredible, and if anybody got a chance to meet her, you couldn't help but wanna hug her and hold her because she definitely is what made life wonderful, and especially for Frank, a man who, for all the years that he was here, he would disappear at lunchtime. And for a long time, we all wondered what it was about. He never missed a day, if it was at all possible. He went home to have lunch with his wife for all those years. That tells you a lot about a man and the relationship that he had with a very, very spectacular lady. So she will be greatly missed, but we'll be there at that. Audit Committee meeting, and brings it back to our briefings, and I'm sure there's some stuff that I forgot, but I'm having a glitch on my computer, so this next couple of weeks, if you say anything that I think I'm gonna be at, I'll let you know afterwards.
No, it works. So, at ten o'clock, we do have a closed session?
Yes. I'll be there for that.
Okay, good. Let's see, so later on today, I have a Public Works Executive Committee meeting, we have a Mason Transit Board meeting this afternoon, poor dog's going to the vet on Wednesday, we all know what that's for because he's a little guy, and then WASAC, WASAC, the last meeting that we had with WASAC, it was our, our conference, and we talked about different committees that we needed so that we could help prepare for the next coming session. And one of the committees that we created is called the Social Justice and Equity Committee, and so I am on that committee. Later I have a, a, and then I have a AAA, not like, it's the Area Agency on Aging meeting. Then, let's say we'll be attending a sheriff's breakfast on Friday, swearing-in ceremony for the new judge. Karenette is having a dessert auction at St. Edward's Church, and I can't wait to eat their, eat the desserts there. I will be at the memorial also for Laura. We also have a Lincoln Day dinner on Saturday night, graduation party, can you believe that? Too many years. County briefing on the 27th, WASAC Virtual Assembly, Mason County GOP meeting. We're also getting our homeless task force back up and running, so the homeless task force, we're working with the city, a lot of our nonprofits, with law enforcement for the county and through the city, and so this task force is, we're getting together so that we can talk about steps forward. So that, pretty excited, we had that going and then COVID hit, and so now we're getting that back up and running. I'm pretty darn excited about that. It's cool. Judge Finley's retirement, and then the WASAC, this is the other WASAC committee, it's the Social Equity Group meeting. I'll be going to a picnic with a bunch of politicians, that probably won't be as fun as it sounds. Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, and the election integrity meeting, and then the Fourth of July, Happy Independence Day early, and then commission on, commission meeting on the Fifth. And I believe that's it, but there could be more. Things pop up.
So, I will probably be at the Election Integrity Town Hall meetings they're having also. I will probably be at the Lincoln Day dinner also. Judge Finley's retirement also, and I have a special meeting that has been called by the Mason County Housing Authority, and I want to say if, if the barbecue with all the elected officials is, is not as fun as it sounds, that's gonna be a bummer, because that doesn't sound fun at all.
Well, I'm sure the food will be great.
I can't imagine it being worse than that, so.
And hopefully it'll be a nice day. And it, it'll be fun for me because I get to see a lot of my old friends from my previous life, previous adventures, so it'll be more fun than I made it sound. All right. Anything else?
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Have a great day, everybody.